Recording in progress. Thank you for all agreeing to record and thank you all for joining us. People are going to continue to join in. I know we had billed this as a D two oh five panel, but for the first 15 minutes, Scott Levin, Elmhurst, who's running for reelection, has agreed to join us for the first 15 minutes to talk to us about his candidacy for mayor of Elmhurst. So we'll start with that. And Mayor Levin, if you want to start off with like on the first two, two minutes of an opening statement on why you're running and why you're running again, and what you see for the future of Elmhurst, that would be great.
All right. Well, thank you for having me. I was here four years ago talking and you know, I want to know people, want people to know I'm true to myself. So I'm not really a political progressive. I am a progressive in terms of the dictionary definition of being someone of once progress based upon advancements in science and the human condition, et cetera. But I've always been middle of the road. But my motto that I use for myself and for those who work with me in the city, if you do the right thing. This is a time of a lot of strife in the national level. We're local politics and we're trying to keep our city running. And I hope that we have people from different political sides of the spectrum on the dais. But our goal is not to have it come through that we should all be working together. And I think it's done pretty well so far. Obviously, the top priority for me is the police station right now. We really need it. Sorry if you hear a little Scottish band in the background, but anyway. Some of the specific things that I've worked on that might be of interest to people in PFC are the backyard caucus. I was involved in that long before I even knew I was going to run for mayor. I brought the both police chiefs, the current one and the old one, to address the backyard caucus. Believe it or not, under my administration, it was the first time that Elmhurst had a pride proclamation, which remarkably caused some concern. And the head of the Pride Collective said, we could wait here. I said, no, there's no need to wait here. I've worked with M D Moms Demand Action on gun safety issues and worked to get that through the council so that the those gun safety issues are part of what we do as our regular police presentations. If you go out, when it came to things like immigrants arriving at the train station, I led the DuPage mayors into not overreacting and making sure that both the immigrants who were migrants, whatever you call them, who were coming through and the public were both safe. Affordable housing is an issue where I've contracted with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. We're going to do an affordability study for both people who are trying to downsize and for people who are trying to move to town. I've initiated the walkers and rollers group to make the town more walker and biker friendly. So those are a few of the things that I've worked on that might be of interest to people in your group.
Great. Thank you. I know you addressed the police station. So before I ask you, before I ask you one of our other questions, let's continue on with that. I know the police station seems to be a little bit of a sore subject. And I can't really tell, since a lot of it is on social media and you can really never kind of separate the wheat from the chaff on what's what's real about some of the folks who are against a new police station. But could you answer, and I'm sure you've been asked this ad nauseam, why, why a new station versus a remodeled police station? Because I think that's a question that I've seen a lot.
Well, on that particular question, we've been looking at this issue for since 2018. We've had, we hired a police architect and the numbers have been verified by an independent architect that one of the aldermen, Guido Nardini, brought in because he questions everything as well. And to do a new police station would be approximately $48 million to remodel. And a building in addition would be $40 million. One of the things is when you build new, your cost estimate is pretty exact. If you are remodeling, just like a house, when you start tearing things out, it's quite possible the cost will go up even more. So even if it's 40 versus 48, the idea of having a modern police station that's designed exactly the way we want it is worth the price differential. The guy, the architect that came in recently to City Hall said, the way our current police station is built, you'd have to rip off the entire front and the roof and gut it. So you'd have three walls standing. It's just not worth doing that to start with something that's not in good shape in the first place. I should add that every alderman, except perhaps one, has told me they're in favor of it. Every alderman, a candidate who spoke at the League of Women Voters Forum, except for Mark Mulner, was in favor of it. Those that have studied understand why we should do it and why it needs to be a new building.
Understood. And I'm having remodeled a kitchen. I know exactly what you're talking about. Pipes where they're not supposed to be. Totally get it. Although I have to, I'm just out of curiosity, if the station, when the station is raised, where will the Elmhurst police be housed?
We, the city owns a building at 180 Park. It's what you call a four plus one parking sort of around the back and then four stories above it. And we bought it probably, you know, 20 years ago. The idea was at some point it would be the gateway to Wilder Park. I don't see that happening. But because we own it, we can move the administrative operations of the police department to 180 Park, which will save a lot of money. Other departments that have done this have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars. We have, are fortunate. We have the building. The operations that we can't do there, such as lockup, firing range, we have very good relationships with our surrounding communities. They kind of owe us because we're sort of the leader in the area. They will handle that for us when the new police station is ready and we move back in, we will sell 180. And again, these are just general ideas because no one's voted on it yet. But the concept is we would sell 180 Park to offset the total overall price of the new police station.
Well, you mentioned your opponent and his opposition to the police station. Besides that, what are some of the biggest differences between you and your opponent for this race?
Well, I don't really believe that he's opposed to it. I think that Mark Mulner has always been for development. He's always supported the police. The, he was, you had to remember, he's not someone new. He's been on the city council for 24 of the last 26 years. So he was there when we were talking about the police station. I think what he's trying to do is to differentiate himself by saying that he's against it. We have to slow down, take a further look at it. But he's not identified anything further we have to look at. He is creating issues about taxes and Elmhurst is unaffordable. Again, if you really believe that, he never voted against a tax increase to the extent we had him. Our tax rate is the same today as it was in 2009. So we're really a very tax conscious body, the city council. Some of his ideas, I think he's just trying to say things to, you know, what can you say? He wants to have a 250th birthday party for the United States and Elmhurst. That doesn't really move the needle. He wants to build a shared building. I'm glad Athena's on here with the parks and the schools in the city. Who's going to pay for that? You know, so these are not, these are ideas that are kind of catchy, but they are not real concepts of something we can work with in the city. So I think the other thing is politically, I've tried to stay in the middle. He, Mark, is probably a little bit more extreme in terms of his viewpoint and is probably going to be more willing to inject, you know, national politics into a municipal form, which I would not do.
Um, well, I think I know that you're in a, at an event. We can wrap up with, if you wanted to, just sort of in closing, talk about, in terms of your vision for Elmhurst, what are the three top things, if reelected, that you want to tackle in your next term?
Well, public safety is always the most important priority. So we've talked about the police station. It may, a lot of people have said, why are you doing that? Now wait till after the election. As I say, I try to be true to myself and this is something we need. So it shouldn't be slowed down because of a political purpose. I will back the police on any kind of technology. And we have a lot of different technologies that we need to protect our residents. And crime is real. We, whether it's a, we were rated the eighth safest suburb in the United States by a financial planning website that, you know, was real. You know, they looked at metropolitan suburbs a certain size. So we're there. Second, we're always looking, we have gone through an entire review of every city department to make sure that there isn't any fat. We're not going to have our own, you know, local, you know, level of, you know, the federal agency that's going through the, to the federal government. We are in good shape there. I am a big supporter of the Elmhurst Center for the Performing Arts. I think there's room for continued development downtown. That would be a game changer. It would make Elmhurst a place, downtown Elmhurst, a place that will bring in more people to support our restaurants, to support our businesses. And it would be a sort of a jewel for the community to have that kind of facility in the area. As I say, we're looking at options for making affordable housing for people to be able to stay in Elmhurst. It's not easy to do. We're landlocked. Every time a house comes on the market, I go, that's a nice ranch. I might want to downsize it, have it on one level. You know, it's bought up by a builder and it's something bigger. But the study we're doing will tell us what we have and what the issues are. So we'll know what kinds of solutions we can have. But otherwise, I feel confident in saying that the city's in very good shape. There's a lot of good things going on and it's kind of keeping it going in the same direction.
Thank you very much. Early voting starts March 17th. We're going to move on to the school board, District 205 portion of the panel discussion. Thanks so much for joining us tonight.
Thanks and good luck to all the candidates. Have a good night.
Alrighty. So we have our four of the five school board candidates for District 205. We have Nikki Slawinski. I'm doing them in order, I think, of how they appear on the ballot. So we have Nikki Slawinski, Brian Bresnahan, Athena Arvanidis, and John Bishop. Athena, did I get your name right? I know the Elmhurst League of Women Voters, they had a tough time with that.
You did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. So the way, I know I sent you an email. We're going, it's, it's probably going to be a little more loosey goosey than the Elmhurst League of Women Voters because I'm just using my iPhone timer and I don't have any assistance here with me. So we'll start off with a two-minute opening statement for each of you. And we'll start with Nikki.
Hey, Maria.
I'll warn you, I'll warn you. I'll give you a stern warning when you have about 10 or 15 seconds left to wrap up. And then we'll go through some questions. If folks that are listening in have questions and want to drop them in the chat, my fellow Progressives for Change board member, Jim Muller, is going to keep track of them and we'll go to those questions after we go through some of the prepared questions that we have. So with that, Nikki, please take it away.
Jim, did Jim have something to say? Sorry before.
No, she nailed it. I just want to remind her about the questions in the chat. So thanks.
Perfect. All right. Thanks. Okay. Hopefully that didn't take away from my time, Maria.
It did not.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Maria and Progressives for Change for hosting the event. And for those of you who are attending tonight, appreciate you taking the time to become more informed voters. For those who I haven't met before, Nikki Slawinski. I have been in Elmhurst with my husband Art since 2007. I have a set of bigs and littles. So my bigs are my two stepchildren. They graduated from York. One is 23 and one is 21. He's a senior at University of Illinois and the 23-year-old graduated from Loyola. Couple of years ago, I have a son who is in middle school at Churchville and then a daughter at Emerson. I've always really held two deep beliefs, the value of education and giving back to your community. So I've been doing that for years through being involved in the Emerson PTA as in various levels, even forming new committees during COVID when we saw that there were news, needs that had arisen. Last year, I joined the Churchville Community Committee and the mission of that committee was really to enhance and improve the learning environment and connection between student staff and community members. I have a bachelor's in education and I didn't go the route of classroom teaching, but it's been a part of every step along my journey. So I've done a lot. My first entry into HR, which is my career now, was leading a learning and development department, which I still do today. I've been an adjunct professor for many years, up until I was pregnant with my 12-year-old. It was 12-year-old now. But it's just been a part of everything that I do. I currently work as the Executive Vice President of Talent, Experience and Development at a group within Publicis Group, which is marketing and advertising. And prior to that, spent almost 20 years in healthcare. I've done everything from talent and performance management to organizational effectiveness. I oversee our interns program, our early careers program. And I'm running for the school board because I do truly, wholeheartedly believe in our strategy and mission to prepare students for college, career, and life. And to that end, my priorities are really to make sure that our students have the access to resources they need. We're good stewards of our community resources, that we are investing in our schools, and that we continue to advance excellence in our academics.
Wow, you are dead on. See, there's the timer. Alrighty. Next up is Brian Bresnahan.
All right. Hello. Thank you guys for all being here and thank you for hosting. I'm honored to be part of this Zoom. So I appreciate it. Again, my name's Brian Bresnahan. I have four children in the district, my wife and I, who is also in education. We have a junior who is attending Columbia downtown, studying film. We have a senior at York, a freshman at York as well, and an eighth grader at Sandberg. And they all went through the Hawthorne, Sandberg, and soon to be York path. I went to Northwestern and graduated with a BS in secondary education. And I've taught for 20 years. I went back to school to get my master's in educational leadership. And I led the Sanonius Higher Achievement Program as a teacher and administrator. And I recently just finished my programs to be a CSBO, which is a chief school business official. And I, this is my first year out of the classroom. And I am the business coordinator at Hensdale School District. I, in Elmhurst, I was a PTA chair, coach, chess coach, taught RE, and was the Foundation 205 Chair for three years and a director for four. And I just am running to kind of make sure that we continue the wonderful programs that we have that my children have been so successful at being involved with. And I want to give back a lot to the community. My great aunt always said, leave a place better than you found it. And I feel like that's something I like to do for the next four years. So thank you.
Thank you. Athena.
Hi, thank you. And thank you again for hosting us and putting all the work and putting this together, but also being here. I know we have lived busy lives and sometimes it's hard to find that hour or two. So I appreciate you all joining. My name is Athena Arvanidis. My husband Nick and I have two daughters who attend Sandberg Middle School. We live in the field area of the district, so on the north side. I spent my 19-year career in education at Nutria High School. I started as a business education teacher, taught for six years, was a department leader for one year, and then jumped into administration. I ended my career at Nutria as an assistant principal of student programs and operations. So I spent a lot of time on, in the last five years of my career, my primary focus was really school safety and emergency response planning. So today, I currently work as an educational consultant. I work with families who are trying to identify college options for their kids, career options. And I work with students to help them navigate that college application and research process. I am the current president of the school board. I've been finishing my first term. And one of the reasons why I ran four years ago, it still reigns true today, it's really with the goal of developing a student-centered district. At the time, we were coming, we were in COVID and I saw as a parent, a lot of the information coming home. And as an administrator, school administrator, I had a lot of questions. And so I ran for school board, was fortunate enough to be supported by the community and have hopefully had, I feel like I've had a positive impact in my role. One of my main reasons for continuing to run is for a second term, is that over the last four years, our district has seen tremendous improvement in a variety of areas. And while that's great, there's still a lot more work to do to ensure our children are provided with an excellent education and ample opportunities for the betterment of their futures. Maintaining this strong momentum, to me, is very important to continue down this path of positive change. And it really just adds value to our kids and our community. And it's really the reason why I'm running for that second term. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. And John?
Hi, thank you again for having us and hosting this tonight. For those that don't know me, my name is John Bishop. I've grew up in Illinois, or grew up in Elmhurst, sorry. I went to Jackson, Bryan, and I was class of 96 of York. We moved back to Elmhurst in 2019, right before COVID. And I have three children in district right now. My daughter is a second grader at Edison and my two older boys are sixth and eighth grade respectively at Sandberg. So next year, I'm going to have one in each school. And it'll be a nice, interesting event. From the time my kids started school, I've started volunteering, both as a coach for sports and at the school level as a volunteer, a PTO member first as a treasurer, and then a PTA member at Edison once we moved back. I was the president-elect and president of the Edison PTA. And most recently, I've been the web administrator, but I think I've, my term on the board is run out. I need to take a break or find a different position right now. But I continue to volunteer for the events, the fundraising, and everything that we do at Edison for our children. I decided to run because that's just what I do. I volunteer. I've always volunteered. And I know that we have an excellent school district. I was excited when Dr. Campbell was hired. I know her personally and I think that her curriculum change that we instituted back in 2021 is working its way and showing us improvements, levels of improvements that are going to continue on into our high school. And I think that we need to stay the path and continue that on. I joined because I want to enable that to happen. I don't want special interest groups getting their ideas in there to sabotage what our teachers are doing, what our curriculum is doing. So that is my major motivation for, for running. I'm a strong supporter of the arts. I was an orchestra member, choir member. So I'm very big on supporting the arts and continuing all the extracurriculars for our kids at York and middle school, even elementary school. But that is why I ran, because I want to continue that on. I think we've got a great school district and I just want to keep it up.
Thank you. So I'm, we're going to take a page from the Elmhurst League of Women Voters. And so since I started with Nikki and Brian, you're, you're up next with our first question. The scores at York High School declined again this year. That seems to be a sore point for some folks in the district. And of course, we all want to see scores go up. But the one thing that people, we haven't heard a lot about is, I'm sure there are myriad reasons for why the scores are what they are. In your mind, what are the root causes for the decline in the scores? And what can we do? And how can the district work to bring those scores up?
Sure. So the decline at York in terms of test scores is a concern and it should be. But it's also an opportunity for us to really take a look at what's kind of working and what needs improvement. We could definitely argue what the contributions are. Some things that might have led to that that I've kind of seen might be including rapid curriculum changes that we had in the past administration, some shifts in the testing policies at York, going back and forth, and some frequent turnover in the leadership. But I think no matter what the reasons are, we really can't change the test scores in the past. So we have to focus on what we can do to improve them moving forward. As, as a teacher in high performing districts in the past, there's several ways we could do that. I think the first thing that we could do is bring stability and consistency to our curriculum and district. Moving forward, we should ensure that curriculum adjustments are intentional, research-based, implemented with the proper training and support. Teachers need that time and the resources to master that new material and, and develop those instructional methods. And students need the continuity to learn and build those strong academic foundations. It starts in the primary grades. So I think our testing has improved greatly in there. And so I think we're just going to see test scores improve because of that. I know our hiring practices and retaining the quality staff has improved. And we want to just see, we want to keep it that way. Secondly, the target, we need to target academic support and interventions. As I said earlier, early identification is key. I, I heard Athena speak before about the possibility of expanding Madison early childhood. And then that's great. We also need to help those struggling students in the middle and the high school levels by offering tutoring, mentoring programs, academic coaches, coaching, and expanding access to things like advanced placement or dual credit courses that create rigorous classes that can really boost academic performance. I keep going back to focusing on like a data-driven decision-making that we need to use. And we need to use these tests as assessments to inform instructions, not just to measure the outcomes, which helps the teachers adjust their approaches. But most importantly, I think overall, we really need to create student engagement and student buy-in that only happens when we develop a positive school culture, school climate. When we feel connected to the school, we see that they have relevance in their education and they're more likely to perform well. So I think that creating a positive culture, we can add quality instruction and targeted support, we can really best prepare our students for success.
Thank you. What do you all think about this? When you, because I hate interrupting. My husband probably doesn't believe that. But when you hear that chime, you guys could hear that chime from my phone? No, you can't? That's surprising. All right. How about when I hold my hands up like this? That means you have 10 seconds left. Because I hate to interrupt you guys when you're in a flow. All right, Athena, and I'm very curious to hear about, because I know Nutria is always talked about as this, you know, vaunted, high-risk district.
Isn't it? So. And one of the interesting things about that, not to cut you off, is that if you look at the state, you know, proficiency ratings, that just one variable that might measure one aspect of the health of a school or the success of a school, you'll see that even at Nutria, those scores have gone down unfortunately. And some of that is the impact of, you know, pandemic and learning loss and social, emotional development loss, right? That took place during that time that many schools are still trying to work back. And if you watch one of our last board meetings, we, York, or sorry, D two oh five was just mentioned. A study came out of Harvard and Stanford that was looking at schools nationwide to see if they have reached their, or surpassed their academic achievement or proficiency numbers prior to the pandemic. And D two oh five is one of 106 schools, or sorry, districts in the nation whose students have surpassed their proficiency ratings from pre-pandemic times. So that was a really big indicator for us that what we're doing here at D two oh five is right. So just to answer the question, you know, York specifically, the, the scores at York are volatile. I know the noise out there is that, oh, they're dropping and they're going straight down. They're actually not linear. They kind of, they started at a place, they went up a little bit, they went down a little bit. So it's a, it's a volatile trend we've seen over the last three years. But to mention a couple of things that schools do in, in response and to make sure that students are learning at their optimal pace, you know, adapting evidence-based curriculum is something that the district has been engaging in for the last four years. A successful implementation of professional development programs is another effort. We've implemented a data-driven decision-making model for the last four years and also continuously have been monitoring student learning, assessing the impact of interventions, and then intentional targeting of financial resources. Really? Wow. To meet the needs of all students. But, you know, be having the background that I have, of course, student achievement is something that is near and dear to me and being a high And, and being a high school administrator in past, that this is one of the things that, one of the reasons why I'd like to hopefully have the support of the community to stay on the school board to ensure that this is going to happen. We're on the right path. It will happen if we continue down this, this, the, the pathway that we've developed. Sorry, I tried to cut us short. Thank you.
No, no, that's, that's great. And, and I know Brian mentioned this, but the, the scores this last go around at the primary or at elementary and middle school level were double-digit growth and right in, in science and math and in reading, which of that trajectory continues. They're building a really strong foundation that I'm, you know, sure will carry through into high school.
Yeah, that's where the confidence comes from. We know it works. Yeah, thank you.
John, same question.
Yeah, well, as both of my opponents have, have mentioned, this is a new curriculum for District two oh five, starting about four years ago. So coupled with the pandemic and kids having a curriculum change, either in eighth grade or mid-high school, lower test scores seem to make sense. The improvement that we've seen in the K through eight leads me to believe that we are on the right path. That the curriculum changes we've made will carry over into the high school as these children that have had it for more than just eighth grade on start attending York. I think that those test scores will go up. Now, obviously I want to keep monitoring and if that's not the case, then that the curriculum is something that we need to definitely look at. But everything that I've heard at the board meetings and from our educators, the curriculum is working, the kids are doing well, and the kids will continue to do well and those test scores I think will come. The buy-in from the students, I think that as they see that they are improving and as they see that this, this curriculum works, as they are more and more in tune with it, then we will have that buy-in and that pride that will increase our test scores, increase their academic wellbeing as well, as well as their social emotional learning, which obviously needs to be kept, kept up at all times. So I think that we've been doing a lot better in that. And I think that we are on the right path and we should continue with this curriculum and continue to observe our metrics, watch our outcomes and, and determine if any changes are needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki, you're up.
Right. It's almost harder to go last. I think all my answers were taken. I will double-click on a few things. I agree. I think, you know, going through a global pandemic, the whole nation saw decreases in scores and volatile results. So I don't think we're any different. I was listening to the last board meeting in which they talked about the IAR scores and was incredibly impressed that we're one of six districts and the double-digit growth that we've seen in K through eight. So I think, again, I believe that we're really on the right path. Additionally, just to reiterate, the role of the board is to make sure that we're not only hiring the right, you know, superintendent, but then holding the administration accountable for student success. And you do that through monitoring progress, requesting frequent updates, exploring root causes when it's going well and trying to figure out how can we expand upon those, trying to figure out when there's opportunities and how do we understand the root causes behind that. Analyzing data and ensuring that the decisions are in, in support of the positive outcomes. I think the board has demonstrated they're doing that. In the last board meeting that we were just referring to, I think there were several examples, particularly around the high school level that they shared. The district has done a pre, pre-ACT assessment, correct me if I'm saying that wrong, Athena, really to drill down to the results and understand, see exactly where gaps exist. And they're able to kind of understand targeted groups and what the gaps are. And then are actually going in to understand, you know, try to understand those gaps even further. So they can tell by instructors or which part of the math curriculum that they're not achieving on and things like that. So I think that is wonderful. So they can really target solutions. Additionally, I know that they've offered prep courses in the past for the SAT at a free for students who qualify, IEPs, low-income English learners. And additionally, to greatly discounted opportunities for all students. And I think that is a great solution to help our students in some of those standardized tests such as SAT. And now we're moving to ACT. So I'm assuming and I hope that we'll continue to do those things. I'm also aware that the district did a math audit to identify deficiencies that inform the curriculum and updates. And I do know that when changes are made, you always see a little bit of a dip in performance. So I think that's pretty normal, but you know, these approaches to me seem data-driven. And I believe that if we continue down this similar path, that we'll, we'll see those scores go up. I'm confident in that.
Thank you. Me too. Athena, we'll start with you on our second question. And that is, there's, there's a lot going on. You're well aware of it. So and the issues surrounding the former operations director, Todd Schmidt, is a really unfortunate situation. And, but it seemed that the district was a little blindsided by that. What can the board do to ensure better oversight and vetting of both employees and expenditures?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the question and of course, you know, a real unfortunate circumstance that, that created an opportunity for us to learn a lot from is, is the way that I'll start by answering that question. You know, I think ultimately we have to hire and retain highly qualified people, right? And we have to be able to match what the district needs with, with candidates who are, who are vying for positions. So, you know, more recently, the district has hired an assistant superintendent of HR who has advanced our hiring practices as well as the candidate review process. The district's also casting a wider net when it comes to looking for candidates everywhere in the, in the organization, from top to bottom, by going to, you know, more job fairs, more universities, just trying to get a larger pool of applicants, which we have seen over the course of the last couple of years. But ultimately, when it comes to, you know, what, what we're learning from this is, you know, internal controls are really important. And I think we know that. I think the average person knows how important they are, especially if we're business-minded. But, you know, in finance and operations, we have to minimize our risk of exposure. And the administration has to, you know, implement and carry out policies that, that are board policy. And so internal controls is an area of improvement as well as, you know, us being able to, we have to be able to trust employees. We also have to make sure that we are ethical and moral in, in how we approach our work. And so creating systems and processes and teams of people instead of isolation in silo is, is another way to help that. And so, you know, ultimately, the board holds people accountable who, who may or may not be, or may not be carrying out board policy. And, you know, circumstances are unfortunate at times, but if we can take the opportunity to learn from them, I think that's what's the most important thing and fix things to look forward.
Thank you. John, same question?
Yeah, um, it does seem to blindside the district. And I think that perhaps if other information didn't come out in Rockford, it may have, it may have gone on even further. But luckily, he wasn't spending the district's money, was, he was reimbursing. But that's not, that's not something that anyone should be doing using a company card for personal expense unless, no, it just shouldn't happen. So what can we do? Obviously, policies need to be in place so that that is absolutely understood that the district credit card is not for personal expenses in any way, shape or form, ever. Having people policing this and people watching and looking into expenditures to make sure that they are all accounted for. I know even in our simple PTA, people spend their money and then ask for reimbursement. And I know that that's not always very convenient. And we don't want our District two oh five officials to have to do that. But a format like that where it's not their money, but they have to, they have to say, hey, I'm, I'm going to use this card for this. It's been approved by X, Y, or Z. I have permission, you know, it just does as a simple, as a simple filing, is something, something that, a process that they can show and follow each time so that they know that this is just, this is the way it works here. And there is no room for any deviation in, in the spending. It's absolutely a district card, not a personal card. In terms of hiring, I think that people, I mean, this doesn't seem to be like something that they could have caught. Like, it seems like his personal record and his personal history was, was fine until it wasn't. And I think it got, it was discovered quickly, but yeah, definitely a blindside. I, no one wants this to happen in their district and I think that we need to be vigilant to keep it from happening again. But Todd Schmidt is, is gone and even his, his supervisor, Chris Weldon, I believe, has also resigned. I mean, I, I think we took care of it and we've let everyone know that that is not the way we do business in District two oh five.
Thank you. Nikki?
Yeah, thanks. Well, a couple of things. I think while the board is not in charge of hiring, hiring at that level, we, and overseeing, overseeing staff expenditures at that level, individual staff expenditures, they do ensure that sound policies are in place. So I do think that's something that's important to safeguard our district. The other thing I'll note is I've worked in HR for nearly twenty years. And because of that, I'm well aware that issues, employee issues are complex. They must be kept confidential. And what that does is that minimizes risk not only for the employee, but the organization. So I think that's really critical. So we're kind of working with what we know. Given what I know, I mean, I do, unfortunate events do happen sometimes like this. And it's not only important to hold the people accountable, which it seems as if they have been held accountable from my vantage point, it's also important to really explore what process gaps exist to make sure it doesn't happen again. Because if we only focus on the person, it might keep that person accountable, but then we open ourselves up for potentially errors to occur in the future. So, you know, I know the board is focusing on putting a, they did an internal audit. I know they're also a partner with a third party to do an external, to do another audit, an external auditing company, sorry, to do another audit. And I think Athena, you mentioned at the last board meeting that the plan is to share the findings with the community afterwards. And for my, based on what I know of the situation, this seems like a really sound approach to make sure that it doesn't happen again in the future.
All right, Brian, you're the last one up on this question.
So that situation is definitely unfortunate, but as Athena said, I think it does provide us an opportunity for us to improve. It does highlight the need for stronger oversight and accountability in our district's finance practices. And we must take a proactive approach so that these expenditures are carefully monitored because we as the board would be financial stewards of the community. In my current job as business coordinator, I am directly involved. I am one of those levels of oversight in the financial operations, including budget management, procurement, auditing processes and such. So I understand the strong, the importance of strong internal controls and transparency and oversight when it comes to financial decision-making. There's actually software that's available that can help create these levels of oversight. So you have at least three eyes seeing and approving every transaction. And I could go into that more later on. But we can implement a routine audits, audits, increase transparency, creating more checks and balances within the system. Another way is to improve communication between the board and the administration. I know we can never have too much communication unless it's a text at midnight for an eat and earn. But the board does receive some detailed financial reports and we can be actively engaged in reviewing those expenditures. In regards to hiring, the board can advocate for a rigorous vetting process. I mean, sometimes you just get a bad egg, but we can still create a place where people want to work and those people have a track record of integrity. So we are hiring the best people. And by using those best practices and financial oversight, I think we could rebuild the trust with the community and ensure that our taxpayers' dollars are managed responsibly.
Great. Thank you. And on a side note, and what a small world, the auditing firm that you have hired are the people who do my taxes. So great. John, we're gonna start with you on that third question. And a few weeks ago, Progressives for Change held an event where we invited various community organizations to talk to members about how they can help folks in the community, because we've heard from these service organizations that there are children in immigrant families that are afraid to come to school right now in this current environment. There are LGBTQ students who are feeling further marginalized. What should the district do to protect students and families who are living in this current landscape and are either afraid to come to school or are feeling a lot of pressure and stress?
Everything we can, absolutely everything we can. Current state law states that without a court order signed by a judge, obviously, the district would have to comply with that for ICE, for dealing with the immigrant families who are feeling scared coming to the school. But other than that, we have no obligation to oblige them. We should continue to direct them to our legal services and not provide any additional student information or family information unless ordered to by a judge from a court. Like, I don't, we shouldn't be participating in that. I think it's abhorrent to have that happen at schools or have families afraid that it would happen at schools. It's absolutely the wrong path. And I, as a school board member, I would do anything and everything that I could to ensure that these immigrant families are feeling safe. As far as LGBTQIA plus, those families, I'm a strong advocate. I am, and in addition to that, I am one hundred percent absolutely against any type of bullying. I think that we need to maintain that safe area for all of our students to feel comfortable and express who they are. These are kids, they're growing up. They may not know, they may know. We all, we all grew up and we had phases and we had things that stuck. And to allow people to be bullied in any way, shape or form, regardless of whether that's, regardless of what it's for, I, I, that shouldn't, that shouldn't be a thing. These are, these are our, our citizens. These are our fellow classmates, our fellow kids. We should do everything in our power to prevent any type of bullying. I think there should be a no, zero tolerance on like a hate crime type of bullying in, or anything else like that in the school to, I, I just can't stand that. That's not something that I, that I would be allowing. I don't allow it in my house. I don't think we should allow it in our district. Everyone has the right to be who they are and feel safe.
Thank you. Nikki?
Thank you. First, I'll start by saying I think the district has an important role and quite frankly, responsibility to make sure that our students and their families feel they're in a safe and welcoming environment and that all students feel that way. I think it's critically important both to student success emotionally as well as academically to feel that they're in a safe and welcoming environment. From a broad perspective, our district has been able to support this by fostering a positive school environment where diversity is celebrated, ensuring students have access to mental health support. I know that that's something that's offered to all of our students, following state standards related to things like LGBTQ, offering a wide variety of clubs where people can find a sense of belonging and students can find a sense of belonging, putting safeguards in place to protect student confidentiality. That is critically important. And then understanding the rights of our students and their families when it comes to the laws and the rights. And I also think we've done a nice job of partnering with external organizations to ensure that our social workers and teachers are aware of what supports exist and what resources exist outside of our schools. I was recently at a meeting for Ewan and was amazed at some of the resources that they support, that they offer to support our students in our district. So I think there's some opportunities in terms of making sure that more people are aware of that. I know that there were several us in that room that did not know of all the resources that existed, but they have done a great, great job at partnering with our social workers in our schools. Additionally, I would say I'm really proud to live in a community while not perfect. You know, much of our district administrator, our, our district administrators and teachers and staff really went the extra mile for many of our students who were concerned about potential ICE raids. And, you know, went above and beyond to make sure that they felt safe, both in and outside of the school, that they came home to a place where their parents could welcome them during that uncertain time. So I just want to acknowledge that I think our, our administrators and students, or I'm sorry, and teachers and staff have really done a fabulous job in circumstances like that, and I hope we continue to do so.
Thank you. Yeah, I heard some stories and of teachers helping. taking food and other and supplies to some students' homes and that was so wonderful to hear. Brian?
I'd like to just echo Nikki's appreciation for those teachers and staff that have done such a great job recently. But also throughout at least my time here in Elmhurst, helping my my own students too and being that support person that's needed. So I definitely a shout out to the teachers and staff of 205. I previously talked about Maslow's hierarchy needs, but I think that's a great example of how students just need to feel safe and a sense of belonging, feel respected before they can ever really reach their full potential. Every student District 205 deserves to feel safe, supported and valued. When we when students are afraid to come to school, whether it's because of immigrant status, gender identity, or whatever factor it might be, it does directly impact their ability to learn. As a district, we are the ones responsible for fostering that inclusive environments. As you mentioned at last month's Progressive for Change meeting, Patty Model spoke about the challenges that immigrant families face in D205 and the important work that is being done and that still needs to be done. And we must ensure that our schools remain places of safety and belonging and reinforce those clear policies against any kind of discrimination. We can provide resources for families in need. We can offer staff training to ensure cultural sensitivity. I am personally close to the struggles of the LGBT plus community that students face at York and and throughout the district. And as an advocate, I believe we must take some meaningful steps to ensure that those students feel not just included and supported, but celebrated and represented. That means strengthening our programs that promote some acceptance, like students groups that we have, the Queer and Straight Association, group called ASIS, which was very impactful for those students that I was close to. And we need to ensure that they have the district backing and foster an inclusive environment and culture. And as a board member, I would definitely push for policies to protect our most vulnerable students and create that culture of inclusion. So that every every student in District 205 can feel safe, included and on their way to a great pathway to success.
Thank you. Athena?
Thanks. I I, you know, and won't repeat things that Nikki and Brian also had stated, but really a couple of things that come to mind. One is, you know, schools are safe havens. They don't know the immigration status of their children and families who go to school there. I for one, am proud of how the district responded to this moment in our society and our country today. And really saw it as a moment where what is unique and special about Elmhurst come into action. And it's the relationships in the community that our school has, that our neighbors have for one another. And who really Elmhurst is really came into play when we saw a neighbor in need or a student or a child in our schools. We we collectively stepped up and supported and and so that helped reduce some of the fears and certainly, you know, here we're feeling that that with the teacher outrage and neighbor outrage that kids are, they've been monitoring attendance, just so you know, that that kids are coming to school and that we've reduced that fear as much as we can. In the big picture, all schools should strive to create a safe and welcoming environment for all students. It doesn't matter what category they might be in, what label they fall, it doesn't matter. They're children and they're humans. And a school's job is to to educate, but more importantly, create that safe haven, that safe place for for children and families to be able to turn to in the time of need. There is a direct correlation between school climate and culture and student outcomes, but I would say more importantly than more important than learning outcomes, schools should embrace the opportunity they have to develop good people. Modeling, acceptance, civil discourse, respect and teaching children how to have difficult conversations is important to establishing expectations for how we will relate with one another, support one another and work together. Kids are exposed to so so many mixed messages and at times really bad behavior, given, you know, just the environment they're growing up with, with social media and access to a tremendous amount of information. I feel it's important that we offset those messages with the exact opposite, which includes respect behaviors like respect, acceptance, awareness and compassion for others. When children feel that sense of belonging and they have, they find a place to just be themselves, whether it's in a classroom, a club, an activity in the hallway or outside at the park. They are the they collect, it provides a great, or sorry, that when those things happen in a school, the school then in the district is able to collectively provide the greatest service to its community because it has created an environment where all children can thrive. Yeah.
Yeah. I want to say something, but I not appropriate.
Self-awareness.
Just teasing. I'm using my SEL. All right. I think I think I'm tracking. So for our fourth and final question, I think we start back with Nikki. And that one, and then I I do see two questions in the chat. So and I'm hoping that you all can say we have this going until 8:15. So the fourth question is and news just came out about it today. How should the district prepare for possible loss of federal funding from a diminished or eliminated Department of Education? And from what I understand, I was looking at different articles today. It sounds like there are some moves to eliminate the Department of Education. So Nikki, what are your thoughts on that?
I mean, I think the good news is Elmhurst is a well-funded district. So we're a tier four district, which means that we're mostly funded by our local property taxes. And we only receive 3% of funding from the federal government. So what that means is again, it's not pennies. It's like in the maybe five million, five to seven million dollar range. But it's not the vast majority of our budget, which means that we can, you know, that that's not as in as big of a risk. Again, I think because of that, it's still important to have contingency plans in place that if it is impacted, you know, how will we cover those expenses? Because what typically gets impacted is those most vulnerable students with the largest needs. I think part of the role of the board is to make sure that we continue to balance having a healthy fund balance that we can tap into if when needed, along with making sure that we're making wise financial decisions to ensure that we're maximizing the value of every single dollar that we spend. I spent, again, almost 20 years in a healthcare organization. And it's not, it was non-for-profit. So we were constantly faced with needing to be good stewards of our finances while still maintaining really high value and really high outcomes. So this is an experience that I think I can bring to the board, being a really good steward of finances while ensuring that you still have good outcomes. Lastly, I think something that we should also be considering and thinking about the impact of is the potential impact on research and support, other types of support coming from the Department of Education if that funding is eliminated or decreased. So I think it's more than just the funding. I think we also need to think about the impact it might have on the way that we do things. And don't want us to lose sight of those contingency contingency plans also.
Good point. I hadn't even thought about that part. Brian?
Sure. So yeah, that news is disheartening for sure. It is a real and significant concern here in District 205 and any school district really. But we need to be proactive in planning for those potential shortfalls. As Nikki stated, our federal funding really only represents about 2% to 3% compared to our state and local resources. And it directly supports essential programs like special education through the IDEA grants, Title I and III grants, which are grants that I work directly with. And they often pay for things like professional development for teachers, but even though it is 2% to 3%, I think it's about $4 million, which actually per student is about $400 per student. So that's actually a pretty big significant loss. Losing those funds would have a major impact, especially if we're not prepared for it. So in my current role as business coordinator in neighboring district, we are actively working to prepare for those types of scenarios or analyzing what that would mean for our finances. And that includes things like identifying which programs rely most on federal dollars. Evaluating the cost-saving measures that don't compromise student learning. And trying to explore some alternative funding sources like different types of grants or even forming community partnerships. So we as District 205 must make sure we're doing that and make sure that we have that our long-term financial plan is specific, especially in terms of federal dollars and targeted. We need to ensure that we have some reserves in place and a clear strategy to protect those student services if federal funding is diminished in any way. And we need to advocate. I know we're doing like a lot of advocating recently. But I think that's just the time that we're in. We are suffering a little from advocate exhaust, but we must advocate for increased state and local support, which will be essential in offsetting any of those costs. And I think communication is key to our our community in Elmhurst, telling them and warning them the impacts that these federal cuts might have. We really need to ensure that if those cuts happen, we still can provide equitable allocation of our resources so that because our most vulnerable students are going to be the ones that suffer most. So we really need to step up and make sure that they benefit and receive the support they need.
Thank you. Athena, you're, I'm sure, watching this very closely as president of the board.
Yes, yes. And was just at IASB, at a Illinois Association of School Boards meeting last night where their chief attorney was providing guidance to school boards, school board presidents and superintendents and attendants and really talked specifically about this topic, which has changed in the last, you know, 12 hours since the since we met yesterday, unbelievably. But but, you know, the big picture is, and I think Brian said it really well, planning for the worst case scenario is say it's about a $5 million loss that I want to reiterate for me personally and I, you know, that doesn't mean that those dollars tied to those students doesn't mean that those students, I don't think, if I have anything to say about it, that they're going to lose service. I think what what a board should do is look at the entire budget and figure out where that money is going to come from to continue those important services for some of our most vulnerable student populations. And that would be my goal is to maintain the services that have a positive impact for our students and figure out a way to continue to fund those supports. The we are so fortunate to be in a community that is very resourceful and but more importantly pays their property tax bills. And so we have, we are put in a better position than many other school districts because of the financial resources that we have available to us. I say that knowing that fiscally we are, you know, we're in good standing. We also run a very tight ship in D205 when we're looking at the financial kind of life of the school and the district. So it would be difficult. The big question really is around if the Department of Ed goes away, and this is the question everyone's asking, does the funding also go away in the past when big shifts have happened? Funding has continued down to the states. It's an unknown moment, right? Right now, we we don't know what's going to happen. Things are changing with this topic specifically, literally daily. But of course, really unfortunate news coming out this morning about the plan for dismantling. So the good news is as a district, we will, the board, you know, can work and has some room to hopefully make some different decisions. But at the end of the day, we need to do what's best for kids and maintain the services that that are provided that have a positive impact on them in their learning.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, thanks. There's not much I'm going to be able to say that's much different than my opponents. I parrot the response. Thankfully, it's only 2% to 3% of our entire funding. But I I agree, we're going to have to tighten our belts and maintain the level of service that our students and and district has had. I came from, what I used to do was lease financing for the federal government and that was fitting large expenditures into small budgets and making that work with budgets that were not flexible. And we did a lot of work for the VA and for the Army Corps of Engineers whose budgets have been tightened over the while while I was working in that industry. And so I think that my experience will help with maintaining current levels of service, current levels of funding to our students and figuring out how to make that work with our budget if the worst case scenario should happen and we lose all of those federal funds. Other than that, I I really, I guess maybe I'm still just in a little bit of disbelief. Like I don't, it's the Department of Education was enacted by Congress. You can't just sign an executive order and make it go away. That's not how our government works and I I I understand that these things are happening, but in my heart, I truly believe that that's not going to be allowed. So I'm I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that that's Congress steps up and but otherwise, yeah, careful planning and perhaps some belt tightening to make sure that we are able to continue to provide all of the same services for our students.
From your mouth to Congress's ears. We shall see. So there are only two questions in the chat and we are coming up on time and fortunately, one of the questions I think wraps up nicely into what will be a closing statement for all of you. So I will ask you, the one question we have in here is in May, the Illinois Education Labor Relations Board will hear the case of the high school teacher who was disciplined for allegedly releasing personal information about a student. Should the board find in favor of the teacher, will you accept the decision or seek an appeal? If you were on the District 205 School Board? And I guess we'll start with Brian. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the situation. I think you probably are.
A little bit, but can you just repeat the question?
So apparently the Illinois Education Labor Relations Board is going to hear the case because the teacher who was reprimanded, reprimanded in this this situation took her, appealed the case to the Illinois Labor Relations Board. So Education Labor Relations Board. So if that board repeals the discipline that was given to that teacher, will the board say, accept that decision or will they appeal that decision? Or would you appeal that decision?
So if they have the finding that repeals any punitive actions taken, I would accept that and move forward. I think, again, like I've stated in other questions, these are great opportunities for us to learn and to create policies and structures to move forward. We can't change the past, but it's a good learned lesson to learn for teachers, just to to have those policies in place to protect students the best that we can. But I don't think, I think I would definitely accept the judgment if it came back as taking away any punitive damages and show our support for the teachers. I I don't know enough about the ins and outs of it to begin with. I just know what I've heard and learned from people of the community. But I think support for our teachers, like we said, is important just because they are the ones with our students all day long. They have proven, especially in D205, to really step up and create these wonderful places of safety and and support for our students and I would like to support them the best I can.
Thank you. Athena?
Oh, I didn't realize I was next. Thank you. Sorry.
You need me to repeat the question? I know it's a little complicated.
I think I got it. Thank you. I just want to say that I have to be, just because of my current position, I have to be mindful of my responses. This is the second question that I unfortunately have to be really just mindful because they're about current things that are happening. And there's a level of confidentiality that I I have to adhere to in a lot of ways. You know, I what I will say is that I I guess just off the cuff, because I haven't even really thought about it, I like, my honest answer is I don't know. And the reason for that is because these processes at times, you know, it's it's like taking baby steps and so and then things change as as you're moving through that process. I certainly can't speak on behalf of the board and what the board would do or what they should do because there's seven people that each have their own they should do, because there's seven people that each have their own vote and mind and ideas and, and, you know, so that, that collaborative space kind of needs to happen in order to get to a conclusion. But, you know, I, I think what I'm saying is without, I guess what I'm trying to say is we'll see what happens. I, you know, going for review, it's unfortunate that we're even in this situation, that things had transpired. I wish they happened differently. I think there were things to learn through this process, looking backwards, and moments where we can reflect and, and say, you know, maybe we could have done this differently on, on all sides of, of the issue, to, to end up in a different place. So I'm sorry for my answer and not really taking a stand, but it's a little more complicated. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna just leave it at that.
Understood. John?
Yeah, I hope she wins her appeal. And if I were on the board, I would absolutely accept it. I don't think that she should have been disciplined in the first place. I think that that was brought upon by an activist who overstepped. Perhaps a tiny mistake was made, but blowing it up into what it's become to get a teacher disciplined, basically because she's teaching history and actual facts rather than kowtowing to special interests. Uh, yeah, that's an easy answer for me. I hope she wins.
All right. Nikki?
Okay, I'm gonna, I, I honestly, I'll, I'll be transparent here. I'm not as familiar with the situation, so I'm really careful to not take a stand on something that I don't feel like I've got a strong understanding of. Again, being in HR, for me, I think the first thing before taking a point of view is to really understand the situation, try to seek to understand the different perspectives. All situations are typically far more complex than they seem on the surface. So my guess is there's also, it sounds like this has come to the board, there's a lot of information that the, the public probably doesn't know about the situation. So for that reason, I have to, you know, decline in terms of taking a strong point of view at this point and would need to be more well-informed before I feel comfortable doing so.
Appreciate that response. Thank you. So we're going to wrap up, and there is a question from, in the chat, from Tony, who is, thank you for this question, and it's a great one, and I think you can fold it into your closing response. And the question is, what personal attribute would you consider your strongest attribute to contribute to the D205 Board? Which I think is a nice way to end this, as, and also for your closing statement. So I think, Athena, we're starting with you.
Well, I didn't have time to think, so I'll just throw one out. You know, I, I really chalk it up to experience. I think if we, if we think about, if I think about an attribute that I have is, you know, yes, I, I've worked in a predominant high school for, for 19 years, but that doesn't mean that what works in that community works in Elmhurst. And I think over the last four years, I've found a way to, to maximize my experience, but really to cater it to what, what is helpful and what supports students here in Elmhurst and our community. And so I would say that that's probably the attribute, both professional experience and experience on the school board. In the last four years, our district has gone through a tremendous amount of change, all in the name of meeting the high expectations this community has for their children's education and to become a student-centered organization. You know, I, I believe and I, I feel in my heart that I work to, to really make it about kids and, and to, to continue on this trajectory of success and fiscal responsibility and really putting student first. More specifically, student growth and proficiency in grades nine through 12 is something that I would love to have the opportunity, if awarded another term, to sit on the board to continue that work, because it is a top priority for me, especially because of, of my background in, in working in a high-performing high school. At, um, sorry, what else was I saying? I lost my train of thought. Of course I did. Well, I'll just say, thank you for your time today. I really appreciate, appreciate the questions and for all of you being here demonstrating positive civic engagement in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, I would say that my best attribute that I would bring to the board is my willingness to listen and learn. I am, I think the only, well, I am one of the candidates coming into this without a, a background in, in academic, uh, as, as an administrator or any of, as a former teacher, any of that. And I'm also not coming to this in, in a, in a very corporate type of fashion. I'm coming purely as a parent who wants nothing but the best for my kids and therefore our kids. So yeah, I would agree with the student-centric district, and that has been something that I have been very strong upon. I've been clear about that from the start of my campaign, that it's students first. And then to attract and maintain the best teachers and support our teachers and staff. But kids first. And I am going to hold true to that. I can't be swayed by any special interest. I can't look at another district and say, well, that's how they do it there, so this is how we're going to do it here without any further investigation. I, myself, I love to learn, so anything and everything that comes in before me as a board member, I'm going to learn as much possible, as much as possible about it before making any decisions that are going to affect our district and our kids. So that is my, I would say, my strongest attribute, that I am 100% just for our children, for our district, maintain our great students, our emotionally prepared students, and maintain the best teachers. And that's what I pledge to do. Thank you so much for hosting this, and I really appreciate the time to be able to let you know a little bit more about me.
Thank you. Nikki?
Thanks, Maria. I'll start by saying, my family has had an overwhelmingly positive experience at our schools and this community. I really, wholeheartedly believe, as I said at the beginning, of our, in our strategy and our mission to prepare our students for college, career, and life, that, so that they can become contributing members of our communities, because that really does make a difference for all of us, whether you have students in the school or not. I very obviously, students are my primary and primary focus. I think many of us here, candidates and current board members, have been involved throughout our community and have longstanding involvements in our schools and volunteering, and I think that's great. And I think it's really important that that's kind of a, something that we bring to the table. One of the things that I did, though, that I'll talk about is, I met with each of the current board members before putting my hat in the ring. I knew this was something that I wanted to do for a really long time, but I wanted to make sure it was the right time, that I had the right skill set for what was needed for the future of our district, and that I could really contribute to the best of my ability. And I felt, though I was pretty certain I was going to put my hat in the ring to run for the school board, those meetings were, were reaffirming that I had skills that were unique, that I could bring to the table to really help us kind of get to the next place in terms of our school board. I think the unique skills that I do have is my career, NHR has really given me the experience to effectively listen to large populations of people and be able to come to consensus, to often, you know, work with people who have different opinions and come to a place of understanding, negotiate respectfully, challenge others, developing teams in service of achieving shared goals, and then dealing with all sorts of personnel issues, as well as assessing, improving, and holding others accountable for performance. Those are all things that I've done in my, in my career, and I think that I can bring that to the board. I think it's really important that a board of seven people is made up of various skill sets to kind of make a whole team that can be really effective. And so I believe that that's something that I can bring to the board to help the team be effective in terms of what we're trying to achieve and carry out the district strategic plan. And last, I'll just thank you all for being here and again, for taking the time to organize this forum.
Thank you. And Brian, last one.
Well, I'd like to thank all you guys for staying tuned and for hosting this. I would like to thank all my fellow candidates. I think really, we're talking about my attributes, but they have awesome attributes too. Everyone in the Zoom of my fellow candidates, I really have a lot of respect for, I admire, and I'm grateful that they are running as well. In terms of answering the question, I think my passion and dedication to education, specifically public education throughout my career, my life really, is my biggest attribute. I'm just passionate about and committed to equity, to student success, to student, having a student-centered, centered mindset. And I think education has entered not just my professional life, but my social life, my hobbies, like it kind of has just become who I am. And I, as I said before, I am proud to be in District 205. My kids have succeeded and flourished because of the teachers and staff here and the community, the parents as well, and, and the community's commitment to education. So I, as my aunt had said, and I started at the beginning, that you try to leave a place better than you found it, and I definitely want to leave District 205 as great as it was when we came here. I definitely want to make the improvements and leave it better than when I got here. So thank you all again, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, that is our last and final question. I want to thank all of you so much for doing this on, on a Thursday night. I know you all are very busy campaigning. I want to remind everyone on the line that early voting starts March 17th. The election, election day is April 1st, and it happens to fall right smack dab in the middle of District 205 spring break. How did that happen? So please get out there and vote early. Urge on your friends, relatives, anyone who lives in Elmhurst to vote and have their voice heard, because that's always important. And thanks, everyone, for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Thanks. Have a good night.